This is the meeting of the Newry Library Board of Trustees. The meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is mine posted, the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will teach a public comment if there are people who choose to make comment after discussions. The meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is convened by telephone, video, Zoom, as posted on the agenda. Yes, that covers everything essentially. So just to identify everybody, that everybody is here. I'm Dick Passary, the chair. Also with us is Terry Licorice. Terry, you are here?
Yes.
Alex Burke here. Margaret Grimes.
Present.
Dick Raven here. Library Director Jean Ackley.
Here.
And Assistant Director Erin Umet.
Here.
Okay. All present and accounted for. A little delay because of some technical glitches, but in this age of Zoom, not to be unexpected. I guess we're fortunate in not being in school and having to deal with some of the stuff they're doing. So let's... The agenda, approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Margaret, do you have those minutes?
I do.
Can you get down? Excuse me.
The meeting was called to order via Zoom at 10:00 a.m. In attendance, Dick, Margaret, Terry, Alex, Dick, Erin, and Jean. The board voted unanimously to approve the minutes from the July 24 meeting. Jean presented her director's report. Jean presented the most recent reopening draft document. The board continued its discussion. The board voted unanimously to adopt the Phase 3 reopening plan with amendments, including the use of one bathroom. The meeting adjourned at 11:07 a.m. Then there's a list of documents.
Minutes, all in favor? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. We don't have to go through the roll call. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the director's report. Jean.
Okay. So the first part is budgets and statistics. I hope everybody got the documents okay. I thought, I know I have ARIS report and state financial report summaries down at 4, but I thought maybe I would just include that with the budget review right now and get out of the way, if everybody's okay with that. So I'll quickly remind everybody what the distinctions are between the ARIS report and the financial report. Usually, they're done at separate times of the year. The ARIS is done, is usually due in July. The financial report is usually due in October. But this year, with everything going on and all the delays, the ARIS report got delayed, so it kind of ran into the financial report. So they were both due pretty much within a month of each other. So the ARIS report is primarily recording your holdings, your circulation statistics, your programming statistics, and just compiling those all together. And the financial report is obviously about the financials. It looks at the income that the library has, the expenses that the library has. And then, of course, that all goes into the state standards. Have you met the standards for hours open, for percentage spent on materials, and of course, the beloved MAR? So I got... Doing those reports back to back was, it was hectic, but it was, it was, it's kind of good to get it all together at one time. But there was a lot of information, obviously, that needed to be compiled. And the reports did have COVID sections. So they made, you know, they realized that was very much a part of every, every library's budget this year. So they had questions about COVID and all of that. In terms of the meeting, the standards for the state, we were told back in June, I guess it was, that everybody had met their materials requirement in March. Whatever any library had spent by March was going to be good to go. So that was nice. And then the same with hours open. You know, obviously, this is a year when libraries were closed for a big chunk of time. So everybody automatically met those standards. No more questions necessary. Then you get into the MAR stuff, and it gets a little dicier, as we all know. But I had a good conversation with Mary Rose Quinn, because I had a few questions about how we had set things up with the MAR. And push came, you know, and as I said in the review, we had our building expenses added back into our account. They weren't actually added back in for 2020, which was the original goal, but that hardly matters now. It's still, and I won't go into all the financial implications, because it is very confusing. But it ended up putting us... What I'm trying to say is, everything went the way Mary Rose had said it would go. And she, the, the new calculations were actually in the worksheet. It used to be you always, you did this all by hand, but now it's all online. So everything was, was just the way she said it would go. And as I said in the, that report, we're what, 24,000 off? What did I say, 25,000? As compared to if we hadn't collaborated on that recalculation, we would have been somewhere around 135,000 short. So she was ecstatic, you know. I said to her, "Any other library would be horrified to be $25,000 off from their MAR." But she and I agreed for us that it was a real accomplishment. I guess she had had a couple of good conversations with Eileen DeVoe at Town Hall back last February, I think. She said they bonded, and they're really good friends now. So it's good that Eileen gets it, and she has a handle on the whole situation, because then we don't have to re-explain it every time we open that conversation. So, you know, who knows what's going to happen with the 2022 budget? I did watch a FinCom meeting the other night, and they are more concerned about the 2022 budget than they are the 2021 budget. They, they seem to indicate that's when everything's, you know, everything's going to hit the fan, so to speak, because revenue is just, revenue was already going down. And now, of course, it's going to continue to go down. But if in a perfect world, our budget was increased by 2%, we would be roughly 22,000 short of the MAR. So, you know, we're on, we're on a good trajectory, and they're making allowances across the board because of COVID. We're going to have lots of company applying for waivers this year, so it won't be such a lonesome process. And, you know, there's good and bad, obviously, in the story. But as I said to Dick, and I think to Erin, you know, once I got into the weeds, so to speak, with how this all looks for our budget, I did, you know, realize that we do have to spend more on our materials, because our overall budget grew by 55,000. So to go, I did plug it into this month's budget sheets. So if you want to look at them, obviously, we don't have that extra 6,000 in our municipal account this year. And how that looks next year and years moving forward, we can obviously discuss at some point. But for now, our only option really is to take it, take that shortfall from our funds. So if you look at the gray area where the funds are, well, actually, you start with the yellow, which is gift and donations. We were planning on taking, using 3,000 from there for materials. I projected using 4,000, so that's just another 1,000. For state aid, where we do have just about $40,000, I thought we'd take our biggest chunk from state aid for 5,000. From the Arthur Johnson account, which, if you remember, is the account that's, we, it's up to the librarian. You know, they, they like us to spend it on books, but it's up to the librarian about whatever the library needs. I took another 1,000 from there. The out, which is income only, was, as most of these are, I upped the 175 we were planning on using for children's materials to 400. And then the Randall account, which has a more substantial amount of spendable income, which is that 15,000. I went from 800 to 1,000.
Jean, can I just stop you for a second? What document are you reading from? Because I'm not sure I have.
The overall expense budget that I sent earlier in the week.
It's an Excel, it's a spreadsheet?
Yeah, but I sent it as a PDF.
It's a colorful one.
It's, yes, the colorful one.
I don't, I don't, well, I...
Huh?
Well, it doesn't mean I didn't get it, it just means I'm disorganized, which I am, so...
Erin, do you want to forward it to Dick? Because you have a copy.
It came with three attachments, yep, and I'm gonna...
Let me see, I have expenses overall PDF.
Yes, that's it.
Expenses overall PDF?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay, I'm fine now, sorry.
That's okay. So it basically gave us another 11,600 from... To add on to what we already were going to spend from both the funds and library materials, and gets us at 61,000 for library materials. And that works out to 17% of our overall budget, which, as I said, has 55,000 more dollars in it because of the building maintenances being in there. So that would get us at the lowest threshold. In other words, they have a 17% that they like you to spend threshold, 18% and 19%. We've always gone for the 19% threshold, because that then gets us back more in state aid. But this year, I think it's, it would probably be prudent to shoot for the 17%. And that's what spending 61,000 on, on expenses will get us to. Especially because, talking to anybody at, at the MBLC, you know, it's all bets are off this year. You know, they, they're just realizing they're gonna, you know, they're looking at a lot of libraries that are getting cut already. And then some that will probably get cut further down the road. So it's, you know, they're just, they're going with the flow and realizing this is a very fluid process. And, you know, who knows what we're looking at next spring, you know, or next January, when the budget request process starts. It usually starts in December. I'm going to assume, since we don't even have a state budget yet, that it won't start until maybe after the first of the year, but who knows? So does that make sense to people? Does anybody have any questions?
I guess, just to recap, Jean. Make up the difference, we're taking it out of state aid and two of the gift and memorial accounts.
Well, we're taking from state aid and gift and memorial, or gift and donation now, which is yellow.
Yeah.
And then the gray, the gray are all the, the funds. So we're just upping what we had already budgeted for from those funds. Little as possible. I did get Diane Doyle to send me their accounting sheet for what's in those funds now. You know, the tuxes affected by the stock market and all that. It's very, I don't know how to read the kind of accounting sheet that they sent me. It was very confusing. But everything's about where it was. Looked like maybe one took a hit, but another one went up. But I have to ask Eileen to send me something that laypeople can understand. And also, hopefully, the next meeting, I'll have a better, a better understanding of what's in there.
All right. I, I just want to do my own, let me just say this. So I understand it correctly. The upside of putting the building funds into the library is getting closer to the MAR, and the downside is we have to increase our purchasing because of our budget.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
And what's the swing between the two? I'm curious.
What's the what?
Well, never mind. It's just, I'm, I'm curious if we're getting more than we're, if we're, if we're, if in the end, we're receiving more than we're having to, to pay out. But I guess they're two different.
Yeah, again, if it was any other year, we could probably project something there. But, you know, they, nobody knows what's kind of state aid the MBLC is going to get this year. So it's just all, all over the place.
Thank you.
Okay. So with everything else with the budget sheet, I just, you know, wanted to point out in yellow there, those are the, that's the 1,100 we spent on COVID expenses, which we all read the kind of nebulous email we got from the town accountant as to how we're getting reimbursed for that. So, you know, if any point, at any point, you, you all want to, you know, try to get a better understanding of how that's going to work, or ask me to, you know, I certainly can. But that's, that's where it is now. We should be getting about 300, yeah, 300 back for four of those wonderful touchless hand sanitizers that Alex and Dick got us set up with here in the, in the library that didn't work. You had to stand there for like five minutes, putting your hands in and out. So I returned them all, so we should be getting a credit for that at some point. But we're in pretty good shape for COVID supplies now. So I'm trying not to spend as much, because I am a little leery, because that, you know, if you take a look at our supplies budget, where we have 2,000 budgeted, we're already at 77% spent. So that's, because that's where, you know, I'm taking from to buy all these supplies. So, you know, we have to stay on top of that. But we're at, what, 31% of the year past? 39% of the overall budget is spent, which means municipal and funds. 43% of municipal. And of course, that has a lot to do with the MBLC payment that we make in the beginning of the budget year. And our balance currently in municipal is $51,195.06. Any questions on that? All right, and this morning, I realized I had neglected to send out the wages, so I sent that out. And we're at 29% of the year past, because I did that last week. So that's why it's down from the other one. And we've spent around 49,000. We have a balance of 164,813. So we've spent about 23%, even though we're at really 31% of the year now.
Jean, do I have that one?
Oh, I forgot to include you this morning, too. I will get that to you. Sorry, it was crazy here this morning. So any questions on that?
And now, is it... I guess we have a savings in here because of Pauline going?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Thank you for putting that out.
All right.
So if everybody's up, feels they're up to snuff on ARIS and financial report, I can go on with the director's report.
And you need a vote, Jean, for us to take the money from state aid and from the gift and donations for our, our materials?
You probably should, I think. Yeah, I think you voted that if there was anything over 1,000. I think it was 1,000 that the trustees needed to approve. So yeah, that's, thank you for putting that in there, Dick.
All right. Is there a motion to meet the, the supply, what is it, material needs, as detailed by Jean, in terms of money's coming from state aid and from gift and donations for the balance of this fiscal year?
Yeah, for Margaret, it's...
What that is?
The standards. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, what?
It's in order to meet the state standards.
And could you please detail that?
Yeah. The amounts, Jean. Where they're coming.
Oh, you want the amounts. Okay.
And where they're coming from, so they can get it.
Okay. So it would be an increase of 1,000 from gift and donation from what was originally budgeted. An increase of 4,000 from state aid funds.
Okay.
An increase of 1,000 from the Arthur Johnson Fund. An increase of 200 from the Randall Fund.
Okay.
And an increase of 225 from the Hatch, the Hatch Book Club, Book Fund. Sorry.
Okay.
That is what we're voting on, so those in favor, or any comments, anybody? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous, we won't do a roll. It is unanimous. Okay. Moving on.
So on the director's report for facilities, the HVAC is heating the building. Yay. It always is a process, but it happened. The, the mini splits in Erin and Jean's offices have been turned on. I'm still confused why I have to set it to 88 to get it the least bit warm in here, but that's exciting, too. We continue to open windows around the building according to air quality and circulation guidelines for COVID prevention. Since opening on September 8th, the building is being, just being disinfected daily at a cost of $500 a month, an amount that will hopefully be compensated for in the library budget with CARES Act funds. I did not record that on the, the budget sheet. I only recorded supplies, but...
I do have a question about that.
Okay.
Who is disinfecting?
Fred Davis. He's our cleaner. He and his daughter Heather are cleaners. I don't believe at this time he's doing it. He was originally. I, I, from what I've heard, he's had some health issues. So he, as far as I understand, he's hired somebody else that comes in about 7 o'clock in the morning and disinfects the, the multiple, multiple touch surfaces, the door handles. I've got it written down. Maybe you remember more, Erin, but the, you know, the surfaces that we... I'm sorry?
The high-touch areas?
Yes.
So it's only done once a day?
Once a day, but every day, except I don't think he comes in on Sundays. So he's even coming on Saturdays. And he originally wanted 900, so I somehow managed to talk him down to 500. But, you know, if we had a professional company, we'd spend a lot more than this. But, and you know, some libraries with bigger budgets are having custodians come in during the day and wipe things down and fogging and all of that. But this is, you know, this is as far as we're going to get with that. I did get some advice from the Board of Health, Deb Rogers, for a, a more natural product that I think they're using at, in Georgetown. So once we've used up what I purchased earlier, we're going to probably switch to that.
Thanks.
Yeah. Yoga on the library lawn continued through September, and we'll meet, met yesterday for the last time. Yoga will be virtual after that. And we're looking into possibly recording some of those sessions in order for people to watch them at, you know, at their convenience. So I have to get in touch with Ethan from the town's YouTube and cable station. It's generally agreed that there is considerable virtual fatigue out there in the world, and we really want to look for programs that we think will be of particular interest to our patrons. And now that I've got these two reports behind me, I'm going to jump into that a little bit more. It, you know, it's tricky. Everybody's motivation levels are not always the best for just, you know, getting through the day, obviously. But, you know, the last thing we want to do is put up a virtual program that nobody's going to watch. So we, you know, we want to really do a good job, both in adults and in children's.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
You know, the, the virtual, you know, it's one thing to be part of a live session virtually, but a recorded session will be competing with a million other recorded yoga sessions out in the universe, led by some of the greatest yogis there are.
True.
Is this for people like who normally take the class and skip one and need to catch up? And what, how big do you think the audience would be?
Well, I, the, the, why it occurred to me was when I was, had to compile the stats for the reports, I looked, because she had done this before, where the town had recorded it and put it up on you, on their YouTube channel. So I looked and I got the stats, and one had 38 viewings and another had 16 viewings. And, you know, that's, that's pretty impressive. And I agree, there's a ton of yoga up there, but this yoga is free. So, you know, and it's geared toward our patrons. So hopefully, that would make a difference.
I didn't want to denigrate it, I just want to understand it.
Yeah.
People are also attached to their instructors.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's a person.
She has her own following.
It's not, exactly. It's like who you take it from, it's not what you're doing.
And she's part of, she's part of our community.
Right.
So it's a community. That's great.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's just, she wanted to do four a month, but for now, especially with the holidays coming, we're going to do two in November and see if we can record them. And then, you know, we'll take it from there.
I don't know, Jean, if the holidays coming, you need to be doing about eight.
It may free up the budget to do other kinds of programming, too.
Right.
Another part of it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. And we had talked about, she actually was hoping she could do in person, because a lot of the yoga studios in Newburyport and various places have opened. And we, the staff and I kind of mulled that around and then realized, you know, the, you all passed a plan that kept the meeting room closed until the end of the year, and we didn't want to get in a situation where we were letting some people use the room and not, not others. So she was disappointed, but she's on board to do whatever works for us, so...
And that's our quarantine room as well.
It's our what?
Quarantine room for all of our...
Exactly.
Items that have to get quarantined, they go to the meeting rooms.
Okay. Virtual storytimes continue on Wednesdays and Fridays. Attendance was low, but I think Katie said it was picking up a little now that everybody's adjusting to whatever cockamamie school, schooling situation they're dealing with, with their children. Katie, we're calling her Katie B., or at least we're trying it. McGann began in youth services this past Wednesday. As I said, she didn't want to be Catherine, because her parents only use that when they're not happy with her. She lives in Georgetown, just graduated from UMass Amherst with a degree in history. She had begun an internship with a museum, which was canceled due to COVID. Though we may not have her for as long as we would like, but who knows? Katie's already trying to convince her to change her career. She's very eager to work here, and we're really excited to have her. She's a pleasure. And we actually saw her for the first, well, I didn't, but Katie saw her for the first time the other day when she's having lunch, because we interviewed with masks on, which was interesting. Let's see, what else? We're, we all are adjusting to the new normal for services. Some days, we're doing better than others, but we're getting there. And we're, we're still talking about what works and doesn't work for our procedures and our services. Marcia's been dealing with... Marcia's been dealing with her mother's failing health and she settled her into a mother, into a nursing home this week. But she's, she only missed one day of work, which was mind-boggling. And we are very grateful for that. As I said, she and Jane were out and I am pretty hopeless at circ because I don't do it anymore. And Katie really helps keep us afloat. And Erin, as it turns out, did not have COVID, but she did have shingles.
Oh, that's awful. I mean, that's great, but that's awful.
I've, I've, I've had
A recovery.
Once, once a lifetime is sufficient.
Yeah, well, I panicked because I just, I've heard your horror stories, Dick. I've heard so many horror stories and I was like, now you have to stay out, but
No, I didn't have a bad case either, but boy.
Same with me, yeah. No, get vaccinated.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you listening?
No, well, I have to tell you, just watching him, he had two shingles. There's a booster. Vaccine, yeah, yeah. He was miserable both times. He was really, his reaction, he got really sick.
Oh, no, don't tell me that.
I'm sorry. It's, but it's better, it is better than getting full-on shingles, but that is what is, that's why I'm not listening, because I was observing. I was like, I don't want to deal with that.
That's how I've always been about flu shots. I just, I've never, you know.
Well, yeah.
A doctor friend of mine said that the stronger reaction you get to it means the better it's going to work for you.
Oh, good.
Really, no, it means
It makes, it makes sense.
I guess it does, yeah.
I didn't have any reaction to the
Good.
decent two-step one. The earlier one, my arm swelled up a little bit. But it wasn't terrible. And it's
But he was, yeah.
Better than the alternative.
Right.
Yeah.
Jean, can we just backtrack to the adult programming? I think Erin was going to discuss walking around, filming, story walks.
Yes, if, yeah, if you want to put that, you want me to just finish up Friends and Volunteers and then we'll let Erin have
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. So I did go to a friends' meeting in Patty Olson's garage, which was interesting. They're very eager to get back in the bookstore, but we're putting it off for October. We're going to revisit it pretty much every month and see how, how we do with that. There's no, it's just a tricky room. There's no ventilation. And having to monitor that there's only one person in there could get tricky. But we're keeping an open mind because they're very eager to do it. Patty Olson and Linda Rivera and her son Tyler decorated all around the entrance, which was wonderful on Saturday. It was a beautiful day Saturday. They're still promoting themselves and they're still encouraging membership. But there are no official fundraisers planned at present.
And it is National Friends Week next week, too.
Yes, next week is National Friends Week. So I'm actually, I think I'm going to write an LT to the paper and then they're going to use that in their newsletter about friends and how, how great they are and what would we ever do without them. So that, you know, that, that's good because it helps keep them motivated. And even though it's a tricky time to be fundraising, obviously, it's, you know, we don't want to lose our friends' members. And Tammy has been coming once a week to help with shelving and she's really kept our head above water because, you know, we used to have three or five volunteers doing shelving. And now we have Tammy for two hours, so we're grateful for whatever it be. Okay, Erin, Story Walk, take it.
Okay. All right, so I actually was on autopilot and I printed you all handouts.
Can't believe you confessed that. I wasn't going to tell anybody.
So, I said this morning, but we're looking into alternative types of programming and a lot of people are kind of zoomed out. You know, they're not looking for another Zoom kind of program. So Story Walks are something that when I was head of children's, I did with Patty Olson. We did a couple of them out in the lawn. And they were, you know, very, you know, not permanent structures, just things bang a stake into the ground and you wind up pulling it up later. But it's basically, you know, 20 or so posts that have a page from a book on it. And people go in and you read the story walking from post to post. And it's, it's just nice. It's nice for families. You could do adult story walks with, you know, poetry and imagery. You can do family ones for children. So Katie could use this for children's. We could use it in adults. And it can go all year round. It's something that can happen during the pandemic where it's outside and if people can social distance. But it's also something that's not online and is still community building. So I had a couple of pictures to kind of show you what it looked like in general. And we're going to see about, about raising some funds to get it installed. So I did meet with Matt from the DPW yesterday just to ask him if we did this. How much angst are we going to cause the DPW for mowing and things like that? And what's, what would be the best way to do it and cause them the least amount of, you know, increased work? So he seemed really, he was very helpful. He's like, of course, we need to wait for James to give his kind of approval. But it seems like it's something we can put through and they can help us locate all of the posts so that, you know, it'd be areas where they're already maybe going to weed whack and it won't interfere with mowing and things like that. So with that out of the way, we really can kind of move forward and see what we can do for fundraising to put it together. And so we're looking into a permanent installation. So it would be more costly than the things we've done in the past. And by permanent, it doesn't mean it's a permanent story. It just means it's a permanent post structure that we can swap out stories, swap out the imagery. So that's pretty much it, yeah.
I have one question. If it's permanent at the library, is there any way to make it revolving so that the story could be set up in other parts of the town every once in a while? Like around the green or something like that?
No. So by permanent, the posts would probably be cemented into the ground. Or, you know, it's like a four-by-four that goes down, unless they do the spike kind of installation that has like a metal, square metal thing with a spike on it that you put into the ground. But no, so this kind is more like if you went, you know, hiking on a trail and you have a trail map to look at. More like that. Where it's meant to withstand, you know, snowstorms and things like that. But it would be kind of neat, you know, you could have a holiday one or wintertime ones. You know, you could really go in a lot of different directions with it.
Little, little white lights and
Yeah.
Terry, I, I think some libraries have tried to do, I don't know if you want to call it pop-up Story Walk or whatever, but that wouldn't be out of the question because we could use what Katie already has, which is just kind of regular signs and it's a
Right.
Because I, I think, I would love to do it somewhere else as well. That, that's certainly not out of the question.
Yeah. Well, we have a couple of stories, too. I think we have maybe four or five that are already laminated for that purpose. So that, yeah, that could happen, just not as part of the permanent installation.
How many of those, how many of these structures would you need?
20. That, 20 is the, so in researching, it seems like 20 gives you the most leeway
Okay.
For how are you going to, going to break down your book? Not that every book is going to be 20 pages, so you have to figure out how to kind of make it work.
Those are the books that I read.
20 pages.
It's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
It is. And I think, based on what Terry was saying, and if, if you find that it's something that people really enjoy, it is something that you probably could put in other locations in the town. You know, just something to build on for the future. You know? If it works, you know, and people are interested.
Right. And, and that's, I agree with that, too. I also think that if it's just at the library, then it will get people to come to the library.
Library, true. Yes, very good library, yeah.
And, and it'll let people see the rest of the property because we have beautiful gardens in the back.
Right.
Yep.
And, you know, we have the garden club that people could learn that they exist and they're doing things back there. And it'll, I, I think it could be really great.
And we also bought land on Kent Way. Town bought for recreational purposes. Just on the backside of the Little League field. Backside of the Little League field, all the way to Kent Way. Multiple acres that the town bought and they bought Central Street property. So that's something that could be pathways at some point in the future could be created. You have that abutting property that you could do expansive work with, too.
Yeah.
That's where we can put the labyrinths, Erin.
Yeah, I know, right?
We've always wanted a labyrinth.
Carol built one. Jean, come over to our house. We have one on the lawn.
Do you really?
Yeah, you can also see her, her White House installation of 99 of Trump's greatest tweets.
Oh, that's
Didn't you read about it?
Yes, yes.
Come over to the house.
Oh, my. Did you say Lighthouse? Oh, no, White House.
White House.
Four-letter. And it's a four-sided structure woven together with laminated tweets.
Oh, I
The open structure is a bird, bird bath.
I'd love to see that.
Guys are available to make their own commentary. I, I have a question, Erin. The photos you sent in the email
Yes.
Show a tray of some kind or a case of some kind that's with plexiglass or glass over it. And is that part of your imagination, how we're doing it?
Yes.
So are those custom-made or are they something you just can get?
So there are two ways to go about it. These are custom-made and I, I am getting, I have a quote from this company. And what we would, what we're looking into, so Katie and I were talking the other day, whatever day it was, about how to raise funds. So we're going to try to maybe approach a number of towns for cultural grants, cultural council grants, not just Newbury, but try to get money from a bunch of towns to put towards this one project to try to fund it that way. But there, we will need sort of, it's not a very cheap thing to do because it's permanent. So it's, it's something we'll need to get funds from multiple sources to accomplish.
The only thing that popped into my mind, and this might completely out of, out of the realm, is I wonder if there are some that are, have been de-accessioned from other places.
That, sorry, I couldn't hear you?
Maybe there are some that have been de-accessioned, you know, that have been removed, that there's a used market for stuff like this.
I feel like this is more of a growing thing. It's something that, for, especially for libraries, but it's something that's really kind of starting to take off. And there are lists where you can look up places that have Story Walks if you want, which would be great if we could get like on a list and, you know. So I, possible, but I don't think it's
Well, maybe more worth than it's worth.
Likely, right. And so, I mean, if the DPW, you know, had more time or resources, we could ask them to build it. It's just, I'm sort of dubious. They seem, and when I was talking to Matt, like they're, they're very busy. So we would need them to assist in installing it already. So I think building these things would be, you know, I thought about asking them and then I was like, no, that's, that's a little too much to ask. 20 of these.
When, when, when Carol did the trash tower, she worked with the students at the Trade Tech. And they didn't, you know, as she worked with a teacher there and they built her an amazing tower.
Oh, wow. That Whittier?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
So there, you know, there's ways to engage
Yeah.
That
Triton also
Community in. So I would just open that up to you as a possibility.
Yep. Well, so that falls into how quickly do we want to get this accomplished? So ideally, it would be something that we could figure out in the next month or two and bring it all together. That's unlikely. But as it relates to COVID and being able to provide something to the community that is relatively safe during a pandemic, I, I like that connection. I think that will help us for fundraising and things like that. So I, I do hope to push on this sooner than later. So I know, I'm just thinking of working with the schools and things like that. While it is a pandemic and the kids can't really work together and do woodworking or things like
I don't know what they're doing there.
Yeah.
You may, you may be right.
Yeah.
And the friends also have been intrigued with this idea for a while. So they're on board to some degree, but we wouldn't, the, the quote that Erin has is, is for $6,000. So we wouldn't, you know, they can't possibly do all of that, but they want to participate in some degree. So it's probably going to be a hodgepodge of different
So the quote, Erin, is for 6,000 for 20 stations?
It was for 20 stations. It was six and change, yeah.
Okay, that's, what is, what are the stations, what are they constructed? Are they metal?
Let me. So it is an aluminum frame attached to the face of a four-by-four wood or recycled plastic lumber. It's got a post protector. I actually have how it gets mounted kind of in detail that I can send you all. And it, you know, it kind of, it really lays out the assembly and everything that they're going to send you and how it works. Kind of a nice
Okay. If you get a chance, yeah, send it along. You know, and again, fundraising may be challenging at this time also.
Right.
Then we have some resources in some of those various funds that, you know, this is something that's going to build membership for the future, maybe worth the investment to take a piece of that and just augment the whatever you can do through fundraising. And if the friends want to contribute a little bit, maybe it's from two or three different sources we're able to get together sufficient funding and audit it.
Or eight sources, you know, it may be a truly, like Jean said, a hodgepodge of
No, and it, it more than likely will be. But I think, you know, we have these funds that have been sitting there for many years. You know? Let's, because somebody at some point is going to come to us and say, you, you've got all of this money. Why are you asking us for?
True.
You're not utilizing it. We don't use our state aid money on an annual basis. That what, Jean, 30 or $40,000 in that account?
40.
40, and we get what, 3,000 a year?
Yes.
So we really haven't used it much in the past few years. So I'm, I'm one of those guys that's, if we got it, let's spend it. You know, and do it wisely, but let's maximize the potential that it gives us.
It's a great opportunity for press, too. We'll get a news
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, and you know, I, I would, I see it as such a good community building thing. And I, you know, I think we could get the town videographer on board, you know, while the DPW is putting it together. Ideally, if we could get it together for the holidays, I think that would be just wonderful. I mean, we could string white lights and
Yep.
all that. But that would mean a firm commitment from the trustees pretty soon.
I'd take six grand out of, out of the 40 right now if you wanted to do it. That's just my position, but, you know, just get it done.
And
You know? Well, whatever.
And then we could reimburse if we the grants and we could reimburse that fund.
Yep, Dick, you had a comment?
Is there a pathway that exists or is that going to have to be constructed?
There, well, so it doesn't need a path. You kind of just go post-to-post, so they're close enough that you can see the next one. So some will go along where the, the garden is. Some will be the post right on the edge there. Some will be by, you know, a boulder or a tree or, and it's going to, you know, will we'll work with the DPW guys there to figure out the best way around, but it's.
This is something that will be shoveled in the, in snow season? Or, I mean, or in mud? I'm just thinking about snow season and mud season. And try, you know, if it becomes really successful, people tamping muddily through grass and running.
That's true.
Good point.
It's a good point. Um, no, I pictured a snow blower. I don't know if the town has a snow blower, but to.
They do, they do.
Oh, they do.
Okay. Um, but I did not think about mud season.
No, that's, that's a good point.
That is a good point.
And it is something that maybe at some point in the future does get the DPW to put gravel down or a crushed stone or something.
Right.
Get a very specific pathway.
Right.
I, I don't know. I mean, but, uh, so I, I like the idea. And again, I think as Margaret said, bringing people to the library, you know, identifying that as a location, as a destination for people.
Right.
Which, which you've been doing for the past few years. And if it wasn't for the pandemic, you know, uh, where you, the trajectory was in the right direction, you know? Growth factor.
Do you have one on the wall of the library outside? I, several that I've seen either start or end at the library itself on the building. One in this.
Okay. Yeah, no, it's, uh, you know, something if you, if you get a pathway laid out, I think we can somehow meet and talk about it and take a look at it and have comment, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great idea, yeah.
I, I agree.
I agree. I think, you know, we live in a time of great retrenchment and many things we can't do. Pulling back on X, Y, and Z is not a great feeling. And this is a lovely, positive thing. And I want to thank you guys.
Yeah.
For, for thinking positively at times that's not so simple to do.
Excellent.
Erin's idea.
Some of us are borrowing our holes deeper and deeper. This is great.
Very good.
So do we, Jean, do we want, is this something we want to move on today as far as a vote? Or do we want to?
It's up to the trustees.
I think we should vote.
Okay. Margaret, you want to make a motion that we take sufficient funds?
Do, do we have a, do we know what the budget really is?
Uh, I have, no. So, well, I mean, yes, from this company, I have a budget. If you can hold on one second, I will find it.
You could do a vote not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Because I, you know, I, I, we should do due diligence and make sure we're getting the right company.
No, absolutely, yes.
So their quote to me was $6,000, $6,010.80. I do not believe this includes, um, installation. So, and I, does it include shipping? It does include shipping. So what I think, much like, um, when we got the sign, I think they would be delivering all of the pieces here. And then we'd have to talk to the DPW about the installation, which I did say to Matt. Um, I don't know if the town would like charge us back for something or how that would work.
Yeah.
Um, so, but the base budget, the base cost from this company was $6,010.80.
Okay, are there, are there other vendors that you would look at for comparative pricing?
This one, there's not a lot of vendors.
I would, yeah.
This one is used by other libraries.
Okay.
Especially they have a lot of, um, other places that they can point to for references. So I like that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, a little partial to them.
Two by four?
What?
Are there other materials that aren't included that we need? Or painting or anything like that? I'm just trying to figure out how to evaluate the budget. Does it include the two by four? You said it sits on a two by four.
Or is this, this is the, the aluminum one?
Yes.
Okay, so this one is actually an aluminum stand that could get stuck into the concrete, right?
The part that goes into the concrete is actually a four by four of wood.
Oh, it is.
Um.
But do we have to get that four by four?
Are they providing that?
Looking at in there.
Would you want to just maybe take a vote today to give approval for Erin and I to, to keep working on this and then have a quickie meeting only about this, like in?
I didn't know it was gonna go so well.
That's a good idea, Jean. Let's do that. I have another meeting at eleven thirty.
Okay, all right.
Quick, quick meeting, you know, in two weeks that, just about this.
Sure.
Okay, I just feel like I, you know, I want to vote on something that's a little more specific.
Yeah, yeah.
We're sending out, you know, as well, right?
Yes, you, you send that out.
Yeah.
Send that, that's the specs that you have. Send that out to us.
I will send you, everything I have on this, I will send.
All right, all right. Let's move along so Margaret can get to her eleven thirty. Margaret, are you teaching?
I'm tutoring today. But I'm not, I, I do not teach on Fridays.
Oh, you don't, okay.
Thank God.
Oh, God bless you, Margaret. I don't know, this is, everybody I talk to is.
Yeah, it's bad. I don't want to talk about it.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Sounds good.
So the second.
All right, Jean, next. I see it on operations during COVID.
Oh, I, did you want me to do the statistics and the article or?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, oh, no, that's okay.
No, no, no.
I said, um, you all have the statistics for August and September, which are fairly indicative of what's happening. So circulation of materials, hard, you know, tangible materials is down and electronic circulation is up, um, which is across the world. Um, so there are recent articles about, such as the one that I forwarded you all, on library success during the shutdown could hurt them. Um, and in this particular article, and there are others, um, they're talking about how people may view our success with electronic and virtual kinds of offerings as a reason to not have a building, as a reason to make cuts in that way. So I'm trying to come up with some talking points and some kind of elevator pitches to have when dealing with either, you know, patrons or even town hall, if this does happen to come up, to advocate for why that would be the absolute worst thing to do. Um, that, you know, yes, we've all learned how to do these virtual kinds of meetings and how to make offerings electronically available. And that's increased our accessibility to people who, um, not only during pandemic, but maybe to people who have anxiety about coming in the building anyway, or who have physical limitations or who have any number of reasons that they don't want to come in person. Um, so we've increased our inclusivity and we've increased our accessibility. And that doesn't mean we want to decrease our accessibility on the other side, on the physical side. Um, still, our place for community and not just a warehouse for books. So that's kind of what it keeps coming back to. So I'm gonna keep working on, um, how to quickly and succinctly say this, um, so that, you know, all staff, you know, all of us, yeah, trustees, anybody who gets the opportunity to, um, advocate for the library in this way and keep pushing how we, we need to have a building and this is why, um, that we'll have that kind of at our fingertips. Um, so take a look at the, at the article if you get a chance. And then the last thing is just a new way of marketing that I'm just starting to look into based on a movie I saw. Uh, social influencers, everybody is familiar with that, right? Um, what an influencer is. And it's something that I think of with my kids, talking about these influencers, and I tend to roll my eyes at it. However, there are influencers for libraries. And it's a way that you can get attention to yourself and it's a way if you connect with these people. And we have local influencers that we may want to, you know, connect with, who can help, um, promote us or, um, share information about the library. So that's just something I'm just dipping my toes into.
Great, thank you.
Got it.
Sure.
Yeah, definitely. Putting your marketing background to, to use.
When you finish your, your, your draft, send it to me and I'll look at it.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay.
Um.
Your operations.
Yeah, do you mind, since Margaret may have to leave if, if I jump to holiday hours?
Okay.
Just because, um, there may be a vote on that? And the update is, isn't all that substantial?
Okay, all right.
So it's that wonderful time of the year again, um, when we have to face the fact that we are the only, the only staff in town that, um, do not have the, the Friday after Thanksgiving off. And on top of that, we're pretty much the only library in the consortium, doesn't have that Friday off. The, the reason, I think, it's not an official state holiday. Um, I tend to think that the town would do something about it if they all worked on Fridays, but because they already have Friday off, it's not.
It don't matter.
It's not an issue. Um.
Right.
So last year, we were able to piece together, uh, have everybody use, and this is just for the full timers, obviously, using their Veterans Day floater on that day. But Veterans Day is on Wednesday this year, and so we will just get paid for the library to be closed. We won't get a floater. So it basically comes down to, you know, on principle, the majority of libraries closed and the town is closed on Fridays. You know, do we approach the selectmen and, and ask for some sort of special allowance for the, the library staff? That's one way to go. Um, the other way would be to, and I just, I want to back that up with telling you that when all the directors were reporting in about what their holidays were looking like, in so many instances, in the majority of instances, it was the trustees who voted on it. I'm not completely understanding why that is, but, um, that's not our option. This is a personnel, you know, town-directed issue. So with that in mind, um, if the trustees could just take the initiative themselves and pay either from state aid, pay, pay the, I think it's $406 for staff to work that day. Pay with state aid or pay with the overage that's currently in salaries because of Pauline's vacancy of five weeks. So that is something that would need to be pitched to the town, to Tracy Blase, you know, basically, and probably Diane Doyle. But I feel like it needs to come from the trustees and not, not from, um, me. Silent. Does that make sense? Or do you need further explanation?
Verizon. We're, we're talking four hundred and some dollars?
Um, let me see what I've got here. Where's your chain? Uh, oh, that's always for Friday. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's minimal. And another thing to add in is that nobody comes in the building that day.
I was just gonna ask you.
Including the staff if we get it right, so.
So we need to, to spend $406 to pay staff and to close the library on Friday after Thanksgiving? Is that what you're?
That would be it, yes. But I've got to get you the right, uh, because I don't think I have it here. Um, but it would be in the ballpark of four hundred.
And you need us to ask the, ask Tracy?
Basically would be to ask, you know, give your reasons why you think, especially in this year from hell and, you know, however you want to put it, um, that it would be very beneficial to give library staff the day after Thanksgiving off, you know, including the fact that other, all other libraries have it off. And, um.
So it's a paid holiday, is what we're talking about.
A paid holiday that the trustees would, would be initiating with the overage in, um, on our salaries budget. Because we, you know, if we didn't have the overage, you'd probably be looking at using state aid. But because we do have that overage.
I think we need to solve this problem permanently, not just.
Right.
I.
It's not just a COVID thing.
There's a functional problem in, in, in the system that needs to be addressed, right?
That's exactly right. I just don't know how much appetite you all have for doing that in this, this year. So it that, you're absolutely right. I would love to see you take, you know, take that approach.
Can I add one thing? Um, if we did approach, uh, Tracy and the selectmen to ask for this to be a, a regular holiday, um, for us, that would mean that the town employees would get a floater. So they actually do get something if they were to put this through.
But we don't know that for sure, but in a perfect world, that's how it should work out. You know, I don't know if they do some other kind of workaround or, or how it would work.
In the way that we get floaters, when they have a Monday off for like Columbus Day or whatever and we get a floater because of that, uh, would work in reverse. Oh.
I know what a floater is in this context.
A floating holiday, sorry.
Not a person, usually. No, floater is a.
Absolutely.
Back in your eye, sorry.
So, so, Dick, you're absolutely right. You know, I, as I see it, it's sort of the, the moral imperative to, and fair, you know, in fairness, to do it on, on that basis. Or, you know, if you want to do a workaround for yet another year, you know, we can make it happen for this year. So it's completely up to you.
What have we done in the past, Jean?
We've always worked it. Last year, because we had, it was Erin, actually, We've always worked it last year because we had the because it was Aaron, actually, that suggested using the floaters. If everybody agreed to use their floater, we could shut down for that day. And we pitched it to the town and it was it was fine. I mean, there was no reason for them to say no.
What would it cost?
The trustees had to vote to close the building.
What would it cost the town to provide a floater for the other employees?
It does. It's. Yeah, I that.
$400 for us, but.
Right.
If it had other situations that it.
Right. I I I kind of feel like it. I don't know. We'd have to have a conversation, but I kind of feel like it would work better if we asked for special forgiveness, whatever you want to call it, for library staff just on that one holiday a year with the trustees taking full responsibility for it, which would probably include asking for those additional funds in our budget request at the beginning of the budget year. So it's, you know, it's so little money that, you know, and we don't, we don't ask for any kind of vacation coverage or anything like that in our personnel in our salaries budget. And I know next year is going to be tricky. But you know, it would be the trustees taking responsibility and paying for it from their personnel budget, from their salaries budget.
The way you make the case is by putting together a document that includes either an image or something detailing every library in Massachusetts and Massachusetts that's closed on that Friday.
I could do that.
Like a picture from the website, whatever their holiday hours.
Yeah.
Alphabetical or I would want to do it and to say, here's here's the data. Because just saying every library and.
Right.
Library would be useful.
No, that I'm sure Aaron could help me with the graphic part of all that.
Yeah, the only place like there are places like the Boston Public Library or the New York Public Library, big libraries like that will open. Because they have a large population of people in need of space to be open.
But I'd like before we make the argument, it's good to see the argument.
Okay.
You're very different.
And my take personally is you can do that, but I don't think that's going to impress anybody in town. It's the general sense I get from them that do it this way and others do it that other way, that's their prerogative and yeah. Use it in the in the in making the argument, but I don't think it really will sway anybody, change their opinion and this is the way we do it. This is the way we've always done it. Hasn't been any initiative on the part of them to change anything because others do it differently.
Yeah.
It's just my take on.
You may be right.
Be interacting with so.
Maybe in the year of COVID, they'll be a little bit more soft hearted.
Okay, Jean.
I have to excuse myself. I'm sorry, I have to excuse myself. If someone can just email me when we adjourned and if there are any other if you you can take a vote without me, you know, so if there are votes. But if then I can add that to the minutes.
Okay.
Nice to see everyone.
For this evening.
Here.
Hi.
So, okay. I guess it's worth a worth a shot, but I'm I'm not just having had interactions with. Maybe I'm jaded, I guess.
I don't know. You know, I know you're right and and you know much more about this than I do, but at some point, for example, the town figured out it needed a town manager when it never had one forever. And so there are changes that get made when.
Need to be watched. That was a committee I was on, actually. Yeah. So they 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 may they may create a committee for this kind of activity.
Well, it might be worth getting the Personnel Board now that you mentioned that, the the Human Resource Board involved as well.
Yeah, I mean, because that's what they would be looking at. They're going to make decisions based on what their policies and procedures are that are in place. And if this is something that's out of the ordinary for their personnel functions, they're going to react to it. But it's it's not allowed by the personnel regulations. Now, you know, you've run into that with them on other things.
Oh, interestingly, though, like last year, I think Tracy voted or had the the selectman voted to have both town hall and the library, like everybody close early on Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve, yeah.
So they were able to put that through. Relatively.
It was the selectmen, I guess.
Maybe they're softening up, who knows?
There is also, I don't want to complicate things, but there is also the Saturday after Christmas, which is the day after Christmas that the majority of libraries are closing that day.
No, that that makes sense. I mean, you know, and and what their reaction may be, sure, you can close, but you take it out of your personal time.
Right.
I mean, when I when I worked for the state, that was what we did. If like the day after Thanksgiving, college oftentimes was closed, but it was my personal time, my vacation time that I had to use in order to to take that day off. It wasn't, they didn't augment that with anything else. You know, if I had didn't have a personal day or a day or a vacation day, took it without pay or you came in. I mean, that was the other option. They would have certain facilities open that you would go to if you didn't have the time.
So well, how about since we're.
We're having you, you know, let's have the discussion.
If since we're meeting in two weeks, if you don't mind, we'll make that just about the storyboard at Story Walk. And and this issue and and I will compile some more data and make it, you know, clear to everybody. And then we can go from there.
Okay.
That make sense?
That sounds good. And I don't want to be Mr. Doom. It's just, it's my take on maybe it's. Maybe it's 40 years of interacting with this town that starting to rebel. Okay. All right, update on your operation.
Not a lot to report. The lady without the mask that won't keep her mask on, I have now provided her with a shield and that seems to be working. We want to be sure to have two people in the building at all time. Things are going relatively smoothly. I know Dick mentioned some something yesterday about opening more hours. Erin and I keep going back and forth thinking about, you know, maybe more hours and maybe no longer appointments. But to be honest, we've only been at this a month and it with your permission, we'd like to pretty much just keep things the way they are until the end of the year. We're open 23 hours, which is seems to be allocated to other local small libraries. And and 23 is very close to the average. And we're that's open, our doors are open. And we have 27 hours of curbside. So we're definitely in line with other libraries our size. And it's, you know, it's a very intangible thing to explain how what our days are like, even though there may not be that many people coming through the door, but the whole process of providing curbside and the corresponding phone calls and then dealing with the public coming in, it's just our workflow is completely inside out. And so it is and that's especially true for the smaller libraries. I, you know, Newbury Port is opening more hours. I think they're not doing appointments anymore. I know Andover, you know, they have big staff and budget and they, you know, they can make it make it work so much easier than we can where if we have one staff that's having issues with their mother in a nursing home and another one that has a floating holiday, we're like, you know, all hands on deck and whatever work you thought you were going to get done that day, you're not getting done. So with your permission, you know, I'd I'd like to keep things, especially because December is always a dead month. So we're really just looking at November at this point and the remainder of October. If you're comfortable with us leaving things as they are until the first of the year and then like everybody in the world reassessing, that would be really nice.
I hear very positive things.
Oh, good.
Their experiences with the library during this period of time. I haven't heard a single negative comment from anybody. And I do, yeah, yeah.
We haven't either. People have been very appreciative.
And considering what's going on with the rise in COVID, I would not recommend opening myself. I think it's possible to stay the way it is for now. I don't know.
And are you experiencing more interest in in curbside versus people actually coming in by appointment?
For the most part, yeah. Yeah, I we had one one regular the other day who's, you know, she's normally in, you know, pre-COVID, she'd be in once a week. She's an avid reader and listener. And she still hasn't come in the building. She, you know, she always places all her holds in the. He just peeked in the building. I I had the door open and she was picking up her things curbside and she peeked in the building. She almost burst into tears because all the chairs all piled up and all the markings and she's like, oh, it's so sad. You know, there there are quite a few people, I think, that would just as soon not come in and pick up their stuff curbside.
Okay. How many people are you getting actually by appointment? Are you getting? I mean, I know we set the limit at 15.
Only one time we had 10 people in the building. We've never, we haven't gotten that far.
Okay. So so the 15, that that cap seems to be working then.
Yes, and you know, the the government, you probably all saw that with the part phase three, part two, we can have 50% capacity. We never completely accurately determined what our capacity was.
Building inspector never provided that? We provided him with drawings to to give him the square footage and everything.
No, no, they they couldn't come up with the figure from what I understood and they wanted me to contact the architect.
That's why we that's why we provided them with the drawing so that they could just scale off the square footage.
Right. Yeah, I I don't remember the exact conversation, but they said they they couldn't do it with that. So. Yeah, so, you know, if we could go up maybe to 20 or something, but.
Yeah, but the demand isn't there.
What's that?
You don't have the demand for that now anyway.
Not yet. We haven't.
Okay. All right. So if we if we left it like it is, we're we're meeting what what is least the the need that is being presented right now. You're you're addressing that need.
Yes, I would say so.
People coming in to use the computers?
Yes.
Anybody reserving local history?
No, that has not happened. Once, actually, the first day we opened it did.
All right. Well, I think by having ancestry online until the first of the year has been helpful also.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Thank you. Keep it going as long as you can.
If I would if it was up to me, but it's not.
So it's been very convenient to just sit here and kind of go through it right here at my own desk.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
I mean, is everybody comfortable with leaving it the way it is until the be the first of the year? Or you think there's a need to change anything?
Fine, Dick. Working.
It's working. Okay.
It's not broken.
Yeah. I guess we don't. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I guess we don't have to do anything, Jean. And we're not.
Okay.
Why is that stress to the staff?
Yeah, exactly. That's that's. I don't think I even mentioned that, but that is a big part of it.
Yeah. No, no, I think that that makes good sense. So we don't have, we really don't have to take any action unless you want a formal vote.
It's up to you.
We just, we're not changing anything. You know, I think if we were going to change something, it voted to keep this in place and to evaluate as we're going along. And that's what we're doing. And I unless I don't think we really have to vote on anything, just leave it the way it is. I'm going to look at it again at the at the first of the year.
Yep.
I'm curious about one thing. Have any members of the public used the open bathroom that we set aside for them?
Yeah, a couple.
Yeah, actually, it was one day that I was there signing and so there was maybe it was the guy who was driving the.
Scary van.
The scene.
Oh, right.
Scary bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but other than that, I mean, I haven't been near that often other than sign things.
Okay. I appreciate it.
And take down the hand sanitizers.
Yes.
It was Alex, it was very good double stick tape.
It didn't. It didn't release easily, huh, Dick?
No, it didn't. But I I was persistent. It came off.
Yep. It's the gorilla.
Dick, heat gun.
What'd you say, Aaron?
It's the gorilla glue double stick tape.
Yes.
A good brand.
The gorilla didn't. The gorilla didn't want to let go, but he did. Anything else?
Well, I've got Catherine DeLea on here. You know, it was last year's Nade Grant that that paid for a lot of equipment for the whole new hanging system for the meeting room and Catherine was going to paint the room and all of that. I I feel like it's something we really can't put off forever. It's kind of contingent right now, obviously, on whether she's even available right now. She was available in the fall. But it's also contingent on the trustees looking at the paint samples because she she hopes to repaint the walls.
Good times. Nobody's in there.
Right, exactly. And I mean, that's been true all along. But because we were being, you know, we were so strict in the beginning when, you know, when just the staff was here. And because we've been meeting virtually and people can't look at paint samples, it's just, you know, we kicked the can down the road, as they say. So if you folks are, if any of you, you know, a majority of you want to come in and look at the paint samples, I can then give Catherine the one to go with and then see if she's able to come in and do the painting. And some of the friends had offered to help her at one point, and it's probably better to get this started as soon before the holidays as we can because some people get busy, although who knows this year? I guess people are going to parties and things, so.
Has there been a any kind of a preference on the part of the staff?
I have not shown the samples to the staff. I certainly can, but I figured the trustees really needed to approve.
I I agree.
Why don't you give us the names of the 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 paint company and the samples and we'll look at them online? I don't need, you know.
I had thought of that, yeah. Okay, let's let's hope I can do that. I mean, let's hope they're all.
The only real way to do it is you have to paint the section of the wall.
Right.
Yeah, right, because you you even with the sample, Dick, you're right. You're not going to know until it's on the wall.
Right.
On the wall, it's going to look it's going to look like one thing at 10 o'clock in the morning and a different thing at 4:00.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah.
So my feeling about all of this, you know, in life is you go with your gut, gut you can, and recognize it as as a non perfectable situation. You know, you can't because because it's so fluid and, you know, with the quality of light in the room, I think some people might like blue and some people might like yellow and you figure out.
Right.
What, Aaron, you have a comment?
Are they colors or are they like shades of white or?
They're shade. They're shades of gray, like warm grays. That's what she really recommended, you know, with the idea that this.
With the idea that you're hanging something in front of.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that, all right.
And we, you know, we've got a lovely new hanging system that she's on board. Well, I'm not sure if she was going to install that or she's going to need help from DPW. I think, yeah, I can't remember. But, you know, we're all set to go. It's just a matter of painting them.
All right, so if you if you could send that along to us and the those who can get in to take a look at it, do that, please. And, you know, I'll take a look next week when I come in to sign things, Jean.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's great.
And others, please, if you're in the neighborhood and so inclined, ring the doorbell.
True.
The staff will come to open the door for you.
Because that's what we do.
That's what they do. Yes. All right. So we wanted to do this in two weeks.
Yeah, oh, we don't have Margaret to help, but it looks like Fridays are.
Friday, she said, yeah, so you wanted to 10 o'clock on.
30th.
30th.
Sure. 10 o'clock on October 30th.
I need to wear costumes?
Nah.
Just does anybody heard? Has the town decided anything on on trick or treat?
They're doing it.
They are.
Yeah, other other towns aren't, but Newbury's doing it.
They have guidelines.
Yeah, they have guidelines.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, I just, Dick Raven, I just wanted to ask you, how's your book launch going?
November 17.
Okay.
But every day is a new journey of some problems to solve and many things I have to do. And I've done, I've done no publicity at all because I'm just managing marketing, which is different in and getting the book set up. But, you know, there are four places I can set up on my own and therefore get a better royalty payment. And then there's another central service that will distribute elsewhere. And just managing all these different companies and figuring it out. My my cover designers have to make, you know, three different covers because the, you know, this is all print on demand for the paperback. So it's paperback and ebook both.
Wow.
You can go on Amazon, you'll be able to go on Amazon to get it or Barnes and Noble or or Jabberwocky. I mean, you know, it'll be it's print on demand, so. Anyway, it's been an interesting an interesting and unpleasant process so far.
No, that's too bad.
Well, you know, it's a kind of thing like many things where, you know, when you're doing it for the first time, you wish you already had done it 10 times.
Good luck.
But we can talk about, you know, I don't know how I want to promote it if I want to do readings. We can talk about about it, but you should read the book first and decide that you like it before you.
Well, you go into our local authors' collection anyway.
That's true. But I also see that you have this, you have to buy a lot more material. So I would say, you know.
There you go.
Thousand books are still. Particularly on 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 Amazon, it was shooting.
Community read.
Well, it's really interesting, you know, you you on Amazon, you can list 10 different categories that your book is under. And your goal, I found out, is to find a category where there's less competition. Because if somebody buys it thinking it's literary fiction, they're going to be competing with every major release of every major publisher. So, I mean, I have two characters in the book who are secondary characters, but quite vivid, who are lesbian couples. So I posted it under LBDT fiction because it's less competitive.
That's good.
And so learning all these tricks has been really an interesting, interesting prospect, but making the mistakes part is I'm not so fond of.
Yeah, must be a big learning curve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's life.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah.
Well, we're looking forward to our copy at the NTL.
Good, yeah. All right, anything else?
I'll send the email to to Margaret with just a few things that we talked about.
Okay. Very good. And we're going to adjourn at 11:48. Okay?
Okay. All right.
Thank you all.